Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the City of Mount Healthy's council meeting on March 21st to order. If you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome, everyone. Roll call.
Ms. Lingo. Mr. Parsons.
Here.
Mr. Redding.
Here.
Mrs. Dosa.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Rissel.
Okay, we have one member absent. Denise called me earlier. She is under the weather.
Make a motion to excuse Ms. Lingo.
Mr. George has made a motion to excuse. Oh, my God. Ms. Dosa seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Correspondence. I have no correspondence to be brought for, for council. Is anybody else? Guest and special events. Oh, minutes. Why do you keep doing that to me?
Keep him on track.
Yes. The minutes. You have the minutes from the March 7th meeting before you. Has anybody seen any alterations that we need to make or corrections? I only have one change on the second page. Mayor's report. Fourth bullet point starts with C-U-R-C. Out at the end of the second line, it should be cannot or can't start fundraising until they receive nonprofit status. Cannot.
Not.
Cannot start fundraising. Anybody else have any corrections? Then I would ask for a motion to adopt as corrected. I make a motion to adopt the minutes of the March 7th meeting as corrected. Second. Okay, Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt. Mr. Redding seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, now we're on to guest and special events. We have with us tonight our new incoming chief, Jerome Dydeshheimer.
Say, we can't, can't move on until you pronounce it right, so you gotta keep. I'll, so I was gonna introduce him, and he's just gonna say a few words and, you know, just kind of a wonderful introduction of people. So Jerry comes from Mason. He started there in 98. Patrol, all the way up to Assistant Chief. We had a big search for, had a number of qualified candidates, and very excited that he decided to accept. I mean, one of the big things that drew us to him is that he was just on point, prepared for every single question, and just his wealth of experience, and he just seemed super excited to take on the job. He's got ties to Mount Healthy, various family members, and just seems really excited, brings a lot of energy, and we're excited to bring him on, so. Go ahead, Jerry.
Like Mr. Bauer said, I'm extremely excited to be here. It's an honor, in a sense, it's a homecoming for me. I grew up on Maggiore Avenue, went to Roger Baker High School, and actually have family in this area. And I appreciate the opportunity to come down here and work with the city of Mount Healthy and this department, seem like a square leg for people, square leg organization, and looking to take care of where Chief and Law see you at law.
Wonderful. Chief, we're really thrilled to have you here.
So first official day will be Monday. Hit the ground running. We've kinda already dumped a lot of, lot of stuff on him already in the past couple hours, but he'll be ready to hit the ground running on Monday, so looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Welcome, Chief. Welcome. Okay, moving on to the next item is public input. Is there anybody here who would like to address council this evening? If you would, we'd like you to come up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Hello, my name's Deborah Lackey. I've been living in Mount Healthy since August of 2000. I have issues with the alley and the potholes and the tires on my car that I'm always having to get another tire for, or put air in on a daily basis. And I also have issues with water runoff from the water that just sits in those, in those holes and finds its way in my, in my, in my backyard. There's no gully, there's, there's issues there. I just wondered when somebody, why he was gonna be able to, or someone was gonna come over and be able to, you know, look at it or repair it or...
What is your address? Where, where do you live?
I live on Joseph Street, but the alley is right off of McMakin, and it leads to the little delicatessen, where the people go buy beer and cigarettes and play numbers and speed back and forth in the alley. I tried years and years ago to get a sign that said, "Slow down." Kids in the area, 'cause my two-year-old grandson just barely missed getting hit by a speeding car going from McMakin to Compton. He's, of course, he's 22 now, but that was just very scary for me, and they, I came here and they told me, "No, you can't do that." So, I mean, it's already bad enough. We weren't, we were encouraged not to front, park in front of our house, and then we, we park in the back, and there's issues back there, too. But I was just mainly concerned today about the, the potholes, and then we, I have a apartment house next door to me. And when I used to, we used to come and pay our, like, our water bill and our taxes. Ms. Law used to always try to get me to complain about the eyesore on the corner, and I was busy taking care of my, my twins and my, my disabled mom, and I didn't have time. In those years, only three or four times has the visitors knocked my fence inward in my yard, and when I called the police, they can't give me a police report, 'cause they don't know who did anything, and I didn't either. Of course, now I have cameras. But no one's supposed to be parking near, on the side of that yard where the wooden fence is. I was told that by Shelley when I bought the house, and by my friend that used to have the little toilets on his walkway on Compton. But they, they were saying, you know, no one's supposed to park there. That was grandfathered in, and, you know, I said, "Well, is that why the lot's not marked Apartment 1, Apartment 2, and like that?" And he goes, "Yeah." But they continually, like, right now, there's two cars just sitting there right, right against my fence. I mean, it's just, but I wanted to talk about that, and then the potholes that really, really get me. I don't know when they're gonna be able to, or if they're gonna do something about those.
We kinda went over some pothole problems last meeting. Who do we want to turn that over to? You have any, any comments?
So what we have going on here is the blacktop this year. Last year, we used to be able to go downtown, get blacktop, sit for a couple hours, wait in line, and come back and still have hot blacktop. This year, that plan has been disbanded, so the closest plan for us to get blacktop is in Franklin, Ohio. So on the cold mornings, you get hot blacktop, but when you get back here, you got warm rocks. It's just, it's very hard to work. So that's been a giant issue this year. And the cold mornings, it's just not cost-effective. I mean, you're talking paying $1,100 for a ton and a half versus $300 for two tons of gas there. It's just, we don't have unlimited funds to do it that way.
So did they do it last year?
Last year, we had...
I don't remember them being there since June 17th or 21.
Last year, the blacktop plant was functional downtown.
Okay. So then my other issue with the blacktop. This delicatessen has trucks that constantly block the driveway, and I always back out and go to Compton and go where I'm gonna go. So they, their delivery trucks will just come up and park right there and block it. But those trucks running in and out of that alley so much, that as soon as you put the blacktop down, they're knocking it out.
It's the delicatessen.
They're knocking it out. It can't even dry. They're knocking it out.
Okay.
So it's not working. I don't know what to do.
Scott, where are we at with getting the tax money off the guests to do the alleys and parking lots?
It's, it's on the agenda this year to kind of evaluate it. I think, wasn't Joseph on, pretty high on the list for OPWC?
Joseph Street is, yes.
Joseph Street is. That doesn't address the alley, but at least Joseph Street. It's pretty high on our list.
Joseph Street's pretty bad.
Yeah, it is.
It's pretty bad. It's really bad.
Yeah, it's pretty high on our list.
I used to have grass there, and I used to have a tree there. Of course, the tree had to go, 'cause someone was pouring concrete inside the tree. But there's no grass. The tree's gone, of course, and then everybody that visits across the street thinks that they're supposed to park in front of my house, and I'm not supposed to say anything, so, and I don't. It's just too much. But yeah, the, the tree's pretty bad. They did come by and put some markings down about three weeks ago, so I guess, I was hoping they were gonna do something. But if they can't get the blacktop, I guess they can't do anything, huh?
Markings around potholes?
No, in the front, on Joseph Street.
Gotcha.
Ma'am, that could be utilities.
Yeah, they came to.
Either gas and electric company, or water, or Water Works, or...
Ma'am, MSD came.
Okay.
'Cause I had to call them about this water, and they, they're the ones, they're the ones that said, "Well, there's no gully here, and the, the drain is over by this dumpster." And I go, "So is the water supposed to go through the alley over to the dumpsters?" He said, "It's supposed to be a runoff over there." But the runoff goes into my yard, so there's like a cesspool there for like three and four days after it rains really bad. And I don't know about a gully, how to make one, who to get to put one in, or none of that. I don't know about that stuff. I just know every time there's a storm, I gotta have all this excess water. So this time I had to, because it was drizzling in behind my dryer and my washer, I had to call MSD nationwide. I'm like, "What am I supposed to do here?" And then they all came out, and we're in the backyard, and they're talking to me, and they're, they're telling me, "But I don't know how to build a gully. I don't know that stuff." So I wanted to come up and talk about that, and the parking issue next door, and how no one makes sure that they're enforcing the grandfather clause about the parking issue. I, I used to talk to Mr. Knight about it, but it never made a difference. So, that's all I got.
Could you have the maintenance department go over there and talk to her and see what's, see what, what's going on?
Sure. Can check it out.
All right. What is your address?
7615 Joseph Street.
Excuse me. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lackey. Who else would like to address council?
Yeah, okay. Sure. Play those.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Belinda Tubbs Wallace, 1580 Compton. Thank you again, last session, for agreeing to remove the cones. I am here tonight because we also mentioned, I'm looking your direction, Mr. Bauer mentioned you taking time to look over into Rose Line at those speed bumps. I just want to keep that present. I understand we're gonna have a work session on 404, which I'm very appreciative of, but that, we don't get away from the main thing of the options. And I also wanted to know, are we still monitoring prior to 404, or are we just waiting to 404 and then come up with a decision on how we're gonna go forward?
We're gonna wait until 404, and then we'll run the data. Police department will give me the traffic data to see how many accidents. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll have another...
If we were, if the, if the monitoring was on pause, or if we are monitoring, 'cause if we are, I wanted to publicly highly suggest, I had a sidebar with Mayor Wolf, that in the spots where it currently says "No Parking," and I've been kinda monitoring myself, I haven't seen many cars, but as a big deterrent, it's one thing to see a ti, a sign, but it's another thing to have a deterrent sitting there. So in the spaces that says, next to the signs that there's "No Parking," I'm asking city council to consider keeping one of those green cones in that space, so it also deters you. It's one thing to see you can't park there, but nothing you can't park there, 'cause there's a deterrent in terms of a green cone in those particular spaces that are already marked for "No Parking" as a poll.
Okay.
Are you referring to the "No Parking" here, the corner signs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And if we could get information from Rose Line City Council to see how they came up with those options, is there a decrease, increase? So during our work session, we already have good information. Is that fair?
Sure.
Thank you so much. And I did do a video up, I can send it to you. I went over the bumps. I went over, yeah, I went over before I came.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you did drop a bump. Okay. Thank you, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address council? Mr. Sturwirth, give us your name, please, and address. I know that's ridiculous.
Mr. and Mrs. Sturwirth. 1590 Adams Road. Following up, this hopefully may come up in old business, but we're here again about the alley between our property and United Dairy Farmers. Mr. Kling, the director of real estate, finally got back to us this evening, and we had a long discussion with him, and, and apparently he talked to Scott, and I had a discussion with you. And anyway, he's a nice guy. Okay, don't get me wrong, but he, he's, he wants to help. Okay, he understands, and he's talking about cameras, and maybe putting a curb in, and all that stuff, and, and yes, we want something done, and, but it's also gonna take the city, I believe, to, to work with United Dairy Farmers and with us to, to come up with a solution. So I don't know what the suggestions are. He also brought up talking about cutting that alley off to pedestrians. I said, "That's not the problem." We heard after the meeting up here, "Oh, those kids are terrible." No, it's not the teenagers, it's the toddlers, like the other lady here talking about, "You can't have the kids play in the alley, because they're gonna get run over." There's, there's families that walk up there with strollers and, and kids and stuff like that, and we just have to slow people down. So, that was the one correction. The others, I talked to Mr. Redding about, the trucks are not the problem with the alley. But this morning, I'm not having sleepless nights over this, but our, our garbage man came early this morning, about 4:30 for our alley, and I had to get up to do my nightly business, and I looked out there, and the garbage cans that we have lined up were not where they needed to be to protect Vicky's car, our new car. So I went out there in my pajamas and gym shoes and, and put the garbage cans back. And while I was there, at 4:45 in the morning, a car comes off Hamilton Avenue, speeds through the parking lot, almost hits my garbage can that I'm behind, gives me the peace sign, and speeds on. This is a 4:44 in the morning, it's still happening. So that's, that's one thing. I talked to Mr. Kling about that, and he's gonna look at the UDF security about it, and you know, to see what, I don't know what he's gonna do, but, and his, to quote him, he says he can't fix stupid. And I said, "Yeah, but you can slow them down." Okay? That's what we need to do. And I have a question for Mr. Young. You have a speed bump in between your properties. Did the city put that in for you?
I did.
Can I do that? Can I put my own speed bump in the alley?
Well, can't hardly say no when, well, we have others.
Well, I don't know. He might be special, you know, but...
No.
No, it's, it's an alleyway. I just put it in, 'cause I got same issues. Nobody slows down. And we can't pull out of our garage, because you'll get hit.
Okay. Well, like I said, I, I wanna go through channels. I wanted to try to do it right at first, but if not, you know, if I can put my own speed bump in.
Well, if you can wait just a little bit, Dave.
Yeah, give us, give us some time.
Give us a shot to maybe decide whether we wanna put one there or not for you, and not...
I thought more would be done by now. I'm surprised it wasn't, but, but Mr. King is from UDF.
Yeah, Kling.
So, Kling.
Tim.
Yes.
And they do not want the alley closed.
Who's he with?
UDF.
Okay.
Said they need that access.
Well, the city wants the alley closed, and it's our alley, so we can close it.
We would love to close their access to the alley.
We'll put up a, a guardrail across there, and just not let anybody through.
That would make sense. They claim they need it, and they gave Scott a sob story about how they're losing money at that location, this and that. So we have to decide whether we want to go ahead and close off the access to UDF's parking lot and upset UDF, or whether we do a more moderate means, which would be putting traffic control solutions, whether it's speed bumps, speed humps, et cetera. So...
Yeah. I think we need to work with UDF and close it off.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
Well, then we'll...
We can't work with UDF to close off, 'cause UDF doesn't want it closed off. This is kinda my point. So in Warner, it was easy. We had an issue like this on Warner. It wasn't easy. We actually changed traffic to one-way and did all kinds of work and got grants. But the school district, when we had this issue on Warner, the school district agreed for us to put a wall up. So we put a wall up and closed off the street. We were hoping UDF would say, "Yes, that's fine, and we could just close it off right away." Fortunately, they said no.
Why don't they want it closed? They don't use trucks through there, I mean, deliveries?
It's just another way of egress out of the business. These corner convenience stores, where they die by convenience, and so they are adamantly against closing it.
I don't think that's truly a public alley, if it only serves the houses on Perry and Adams. Is that correct?
Just Perry.
And the adult daycare.
And the adult daycare.
Yeah. That's... Which brings, yeah, that's a good idea, actually. If we wanna abandon the alley, because that's the only access, then that becomes private property, but that's just a backhanded way of doing things.
Well, then they would have to pay to maintain it.
Yes. Yeah, they'd have to pay to maintain it, and, but they, they could certainly close it off.
I did make a suggestion to, um...
We could do that.
I got my two cents worth in, on the phone, and so, and I said, "Now, what if, what if UDF and the city and split it three ways and extend our out, our driveway back more into our backyards? So when the people speed out of UDF, they can't hit my car, because it'll be further in my backyard." And he kind, you know...
I think that's too unfair to you.
Huh? Yeah. But then I lost my car, though, two times, so...
Ross, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Redding.
Did the car that hit you the last month, did it make any attempt to turn?
Did it make any what?
Attempt to turn and miss your car?
They, the cameras show from the...
According to Officer, what's his name?
Christopher...
Yeah.
Jones.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked to him outside here, walking the dog. He said the video that they saw was the car actually came into UDF's parking lot, they changed drivers. Okay? And then the new driver came and hit Vicky's car. They backed up, back into UDF, changed drivers again...
In reverse.
And left.
And left.
But they left on Hamilton Avenue where the, the license plate...
And they couldn't get the license plate of the car, but they knew that it was a gray silver SUV, and a GM model, and they had a serial number on...
Off of a part.
Off of a part. And it was a male and a female, and the male was wearing a white t-shirt, so...
Yeah. So, so the basis for my question is, is that I don't think, I guess, I think they just were gonna keep going straight, no matter if you're right there, or even 20 feet further back.
Might've hit the house.
I don't think that's gonna help you, yes.
Okay. So I guess we're looking at the speed bumps.
But I mean, you know, I'm not trying to negotiate for you, but, I mean, I don't know how much that's gonna help you to disrupt your life.
It was just a suggestion.
Yeah.
As I thought, you know, something that...
It could be like right here.
Yep. Well, slowing them down, as Dave's mentioned, is, is really a key.
If you make it one way.
Well, you, then you can't, you can't leave. You can drive into your house, but you can't leave, if you make it one way.
So, strongly one way or the other, whether we block it off or put a speed bump?
Can't block it off.
I would.
There's businesses there.
That would be my, that would be my, we'd block it off from UDF's.
Oh.
So UDF can't go through, yeah, the people.
That, that would be the best solution, to block it. If that can't happen, we need to do something else, so...
And it can. I just, I want council to understand.
Yeah, there'll be a lawsuit.
It won't be with UDF.
Right.
It'll be us upsetting them, which I'm fine with. I, I don't see a purpose to keep that open when we have everything else. Now, vacating the alley would not solve it, because when you vacate the alley, it goes to the property owner, so they'd have to maintain it, but additionally, they are then required by law to maintain access to the other properties. And since there's already access to UDF, they wouldn't be allowed to close off UDF.
Yep.
It's also, it's also split, isn't it? It'd be split between the two.
It would be split between the two.
So UDF would have to agree to take on half of it. They would have to agree to take on half of it.
Sure.
And I don't know, there's probably other people that are involved in it as well.
So he's gonna ask the law director, what kind of li, we always have to assess liability for lawsuits.
That's why UDF can't put more speed bumps in their area, because people trip over them and they might get sued.
They might get sued.
Right.
But, you know...
It seemed like that was the one thing he was high on.
They have insurance, we have insurance, and we, we understand that, but, you know...
He had mentioned putting speed bumps in. I don't know if there's a certain type, you know, maybe if they're smaller, that someone couldn't trip on, but he, he had mentioned that, Tim Kling had.
He, he mentioned a lot of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, like I said, he's a nice guy, good talker.
He's, he's a business guy. He's a...
It wasn't an alley right there.
Yep.
We talked about the animal place putting bars on their windows. I said, "This place is looking like Chicago."
Thanks for coming up. Vicky, Dave, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address council tonight? Okay. That closes out the public input session. Committee and commission reports. Business partnership and alliance, Mr. Young.
I had business association meeting last week. We have our president here, Dwight Moody, and our secretary here, also. Call them out, since they're sitting there. Talked a little bit about the parking there on Compton, what we're doing with that, which we just talked about. Something was brought up about a bus stop between Compton and, on Compton, between Hamilton and Harrison, right in front of the beauty salon right there, right by the alleyway, by the Fortune Express there. I guess they've put a bus stop there now. I meant to look when I, before I came up tonight, but the buses just stop in the middle of the street. So there's parking all through there, so, so when the bus pulls up, they're just stopping right there on the middle of the street, and just kinda blocking everything up there, and that's, that's kind of a tough area to block there. So we need to figure out something in that area there. And they have money set aside for scholarship for a senior at Mount Healthy High School. And, um, so they're working on online application for that to fill out, and once we get that information, we'll get that out there to the students, so they can fill out, fill out that for, looks like up to a thousand dollars. I think there's money left over from last year or so, up to a thousand for that, for that one student, so. I think that's about all I have, unless you all have anything? That's all I have on that right now.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Young? That's it, then?
That's it.
Okay. Unifications, Ms. Lingo, uh, she's not here, so we'll move on. Uh, economic development, Mr. Young.
Well, we'll do it again. Um, we had our first meeting tonight, um, before this meeting. Talking about the seventy-five oh eight Hamilton Avenue, that would be the antique mall. Was up there today with Justin and went through the roof of it, uh, definitely some roof issues, there are a lot of issues up there, so. Um, we're looking for some directions to go on that, so we're putting together a, a group to go down, look at the structural, structure of the property, see where that's at, and, uh, kind of get some ideas what to go forward with that, so. That's really about all we talked about tonight, and that's really about all I really have right now. That was a lot, uh, did a lot of photos today and a lot of looking at it, so. Um, it was a lot to take in in a short time, so. That's really about all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Finance, Mr. Parsons. No report. Park commission, Ms. Dosa.
Thank you. Um, we had our park commission committee in this week, and we discussed the issues with the park and place structure. Um, Justin had came before council before and, and told a little bit about what was happening with the park place structure, but, um, we went out and looked at it, and the risk assessment person came out and determined that it was unsafe and it needs to come down. We initially put, uh, Justin rather, put up orange fencing to kind of ward it off until we can come back to council, to present it to council, to have a unanimous decision to take it down. There's a lot of things that cannot be replaced because of the age of the structure. Um, and there's a lot of things that need to be done to make it safer, but it's just not going to work because the parts can't be replaced. Correct, Justin?
Yes, and there's, um, design flaws, I guess you'd say, that weren't bought off back in the nineties when the thing was built. That can't be done grandfathered in, I think. So, um, head and traffic issues, heat, the, the, the bed's warm, so especially somebody get caught out by their head. Some situations on the playground that could happen, things like that.
And several of the slides are cracked, can't be repaired, can't be taken apart to replace. The parts don't even, we can't even get the parts anymore, from my understanding. So, um, I present that to council because I can't make that decision, I need for everyone to agree that it's unsafe, and from the information he provided to us before, and just to unanimously agree to take it down. We tried to ward it off until we could figure out something else to do, and he put up an orange fence, and people are going right over the orange fence and getting on the structure. And I'm just worried about the liability to the city if someone gets on there and gets hurt.
Do you want to cover this in new business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So in new business. But that's, and then, so with that being said, um, we talked about ways in which we could try to have, um, help get funding or grants to replace the structure once it's down. So I'm going to ask if, if maybe We Thrive could help, um, I was going to ask Scott about whether or not we have any COVID money that could help towards that. So that is all that I have right now for park commission.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Safety, Mr. Redding.
Um, nothing new to report, just some follow-up. The, if you all recall last month, the, uh, the, the shooting incident, um, I'll say around the Compton and Elizabeth intersection. Uh, no update on that, uh, nobody's talking. And then on getting some additional information concerning Clovernook Apartments and fire runs, uh, still, still working on gathering that information. And then finally, just, uh, in my thoughts, I was, I know we've, in the past, we've had a block watch, but it seems to have become inactive, and I'm just trying to figure out ways to revitalize that, so, um, throughout the community, so, uh, more to come on that. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Redding. Questions? Streets, Ms. Rissel.
Well, I propose we have a meeting before our next council meeting to go over the speed bumps. I'm going to try to get out with Justin, hopefully Thursday, gentlemen's coming in town with information on the speed bumps, and hopefully I'll.
Be able to see what that's about.
April fourth. April fourth.
Yes, April fourth, we have a meeting.
What time would that be? Six fifteen, six?
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Peggy?
No.
Okay, I, I just, I'll bring this up, I was going up Harrison Avenue this afternoon, and the contractor that's doing Compton Road is starting to un, bring equipment in and unload it. They had a paver there, rollers and so forth, so they may be getting ready to start back on Compton Road.
Yay. Ross, one thing for Peggy, I haven't forgotten about you, was just out of town over the weekend, so, so we'll, we'll get you caught up.
Okay, moving on then to schools, Mr. George.
Couple things. As of, as of yesterday, actually, uh, Mount Healthy City School District implemented a new access constru, control system to improve security and safety, and, um, you can go to the Mount Healthy City Schools website to find more information about this, but essentially what it is, uh, it's a system that will ID visitors and guests as they come into the school, and the system is tapped into databases, uh, for example, the National Sex Offender Registry, things like that, so it'll, uh, kind of screen people immediately as they come into the school. Something else, and this is kind of close to home with me, uh, because I was a graduate of Mount Healthy and a choir student all the way through. But last week, the Mount Healthy Choir students, on behalf of, uh, Ohio Arts Council grant, uh, went up to Central State University and, uh, performed, and I know our choir director's a graduate, um, Everett Moore, think very highly of him, so he's a graduate of that school, so I, I just think it's really cool that they're getting out, getting some exposure to the community. And, uh, yeah, it, it definitely was a part of making me who I am, so I, I think that's really neat, but that's, that's all I have. And like, you can find out more information on the school district website about those.
Okay. Thank you. It's a little disconcerting for me to hear about, I mean, it's wonderful to hear about the safety things they're doing. But they didn't even lock the high, they didn't even lock the doors when I went to school. Grade school, high school, none of them. Okay, library, Ms. Dosa.
Thank you, um, just a couple reminders, um, the Mount Healthy Branch Library is still a location that's distributing, um, rapid at home COVID test kits, if you would like to get one. Um, they still have tax, tax booklets and forms available, um, for tax preparation. Also, just to remind you that the A R, A A R P and United Way are offering tax help in preparation of, at some of the locations, not Mount Healthy unfortunately, but if you need help or assistance, you can look on the main website and look under, um, tax help at library services, and locate a branch that would have those services for you. Um, and lastly, they're still serving after-school snacks for the youth from Monday to Friday, three thirty to four P M. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the mayor's report, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, I have a few different things. Uh, first of all, with the aggregation, some of you may have been contacted, I was contacted by quite a few, I know Scott was contacted by quite a few. Duke sent out emails to people that were part of the aggregation, saying thank you for signing up to rejoin us. The people that didn't sign up to rejoin them, and I'm sure Kath, you got a lot of calls, a lot of people upset. Apparently, they're automatically doing this whenever an aggregation contract expires, it's a little misleading. Uh, they did send out an updated one, um, yesterday and today, so people should be getting those. That, um, now says, it looks like you are back in your aggregate, community aggregation program, so it is being corrected now. Um, it's very frustrating and confusing, but I want to make sure the residents understand that you are part of the aggregation program unless you opt out. You don't have to do anything, despite with that initial, um, contact saying you chose Duke. That's not accurate, um, so hopefully that email will straighten it out now. The next thing, We Thrive had a meeting tonight, there's a lot going on, so I, I previously mentioned that I helped with the application process for a grant for the wetlands that they, um, were successful in getting, they got a little over eighty-one hundred dollars, and they've already removed almost all of the invasive species in the north end of the wetland park. They did also, well, they're going to be working on trail stuff, bat boxes, all kinds of stuff, they got a lot going on. Um, so this is going to be going on over the next several months, keep an eye out for that. Um, there is a new project underway, um, with Pastor Wiley at the church right at the corner of, um, Compton and Perry, right here. They actually have a mental health program now, and they actually have a clinician that's in there. Um, they actually have a psychiatrist on, um, that has an office there for psychiatric help and mental, mental health services, and they're teaming up with Ticken Farm and We Thrive to start a comprehensive mental health program, um, in the community, and they're going to invite, um, Mount Healthy Family Practice on board as well, so that's terrific. And to actual, actually have, um, psychiatrists there would be great. So that's being worked on right now, and we're directing some funding that way, there's a thirty-seven hundred dollar grant, uh, from We Thrive, and then a big grant available from Interact for Health that they're applying for as well. They're the ones that gave our community almost fifty thousand dollars when we started We Thrive, so we're really optimistic that, um, that they'll get that. In the conversation, we also brought up the park, which is funny, um, it's great, so Nature Works. In the past, this was a long time ago, when we did some park upgrades, um, we actually went through We Thrive, we applied for a Nature Works grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and that's how we funded the track around the park. And they actually have a, that same grant is up right now, where we can apply for it, this is around twenty-nine.
Okay.
We can get up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we put in a twenty-five thousand, or a twenty-five percent match. So we can really get bang for our buck. This is for playground equipment.
Great.
So this is eligible. The downside is, we have to apply by June first, it's not a hard application, I'm willing to put in some work on it, um, work with anybody. That is something we can look at, um, let's do June first, but then they won't announce the winters until August.
That's okay.
At that point, it works on reimbursement, so we, we would have to purchase stuff and they would reimburse us. Downside is, that means no playground this summer.
I know, unfortunately.
Which is bad, but if we could get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the play equipment, hopefully that'll be worth the payoff, um, so I do think we need to look at that, so I'll talk to you about that, and we can see if there's anyone with public health that can help us apply. And we'll see. So they will, yeah, up to seventy-five percent, which up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is eligible. Um, and then the last thing is of my two appointments for the C R A Housing Council, um, I asked three people of their interest, one immediately jumped to it, so I am appointing her. Um, I have two other people, and I'll tell you who she is in a second. I do have two other people interested, and they're trying to figure out, um, if they have time. I told them it shouldn't be much of a time commitment at all, maybe a couple times a year, so I'm really hoping to get a response soon. Uh, I purposely asked two people that, or three people, um, that are renters, because I think it's important that we have some people with rental experience on this board. Um, the first person who jumped on it is Desiree Hozley, who is really an amazing resident that we have. Um, she is the one running, uh, the open mics right now, uh, with Jaclyn, who was up here another night. She, her experience is with AmeriCorps and the Volunteers of America, uh, she worked with Urban Appalachian Council, she is on the board of Cradle Cincinnati, and she's the co-director of Mount Healthy Alliance Zone Two Three One right now. Um, she lives at Lake of the Woods as a renter, I think she brings some good experience from a wide variety of background, um, to this board. She also is a graduate of the City of Cincinnati, uh, City Council School, which is a program that you go through if you're interested in public office someday, where they actually teach you about open records, and they teach you about executive session and all the, the procedures and policies that elected officials have, so. I think she would be great, and she wants to do it, um, so she is my, she is one, my one of two appointments, and I will, I'll have a confirmation by the end of the week on the other one, it's between two people right now. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Questions for the mayor? Okay, moving on, city manager, Mr. Bauer.
I'll just add a little bit to the U D F discussion, um, I'm going to pull the police data from that location. Something that could be helpful is if, if just somehow we could prove that people are cutting through with data. I think everyone pretty much agrees that is what is happening, but once you start talking about forcing people to spend money to fix a problem, they want a little extra data. So I'll, I'll pull all that information with our police department, kind of see what we can get and put together. He did at least seem high on speed bumps, but, you know, he's kind of beholden to the actual property managers and the owners and stuff like that, so who knows if he can even deliver on the speed bumps, you know, I'm, I'm with you. Uh, but I'll, I'll keep up with that relationship and just kind of, we'll see where it goes, and I'll, I'll keep you up to date, so. Let's see, I had mentioned before the safer grant for the fire department, um, that was successfully submitted last week. That's for two full-timers, um, it's probably about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for three years that it would cover. I believe it's two or three years, um, so a good chunk of money, that would get us two additional full-timers, so. Not sure the timing on when we'll hear back, uh, if we're accepted, but, uh, that's at least been submitted, we're waiting to hear back. I shouldn't, Greg, I should have asked you this before, did we have any updates on the May eighteenth event, timing or anything like that? Okay, so May eighteenth is still what is scheduled for the open house, that's where the kids will come, and I guess a couple council members, I think maybe you two have done it in the past. So it's that event that we're starting to plan, when, once we get more details, I'll, I'll, uh, bring those to you. Um, I've got some information on the levy, I'll wait till we get to that, uh, you know, continuing versus renewal versus replacement. Other than that, that's really all I had, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Questions? Okay, finance director, Melanie Brandis.
Just have the February month end reports for in your packet, um, if you have any questions, open now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have, then move on to the ordinances and resolutions, we have no ordinances. First or second readings, we have two resolutions that have, need a second reading, and one resolution that needs, uh, well, it's asked for emergency, need to have it tonight, that newest resolution. But anyway, let's get started. On the second reading of the resolution, twenty-three dash one two zero one. A resolution of necessity for levying a tax exceeding the ten mil limitations for police services. I think we had a first reading on this at our March seventh, or?
So my homework from last meeting was to kind of figure out what the difference between the five-year versus a continuing versus a replacement. Um, basically, the continuing and the renewal, which is what we used to have, where every five years it had to be renewed. You get the certification, so if you have one mil and it's worth a hundred thousand, it's never ever going to go over a hundred thousand. It's probably going to fluctuate between ninety to a hundred, regardless of what, you know, property values double or triple, you're stuck at that original certification. So I mean, you will at least max out at what it is, but you'll never go over. The replacement, it gets you the new assessed value of the property, so if property values go up, you would want to get a replacement or just an additional levy that would get you the new certification rate.
Yep.
So that's, that is the difference, so if we do a, what's the first one here, the five-year? So in five years, we would, it would go up for renewal, it would still stay at whatever they certify it at right now, which would probably be around a hundred and thirty thousand. So in five years, it would still get us only a hundred and thirty thousand, even if property values double.
But we would have to pass it again.
Correct.
Yes.
And the continuing, continuing will stay on the books for forever, but it will, again, only be at the max amount, regardless of property values or how high they go.
Yes. The only way it goes up is if you have substantial new construction.
Correct. Well, I think your certification amount that they give you, so right, the last time we did this was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, I think. I don't know that it matters.
I mean, if, if, if they, if somebody built a new street in Mount Healthy with ten new houses on it, that would qualify for it to go up, no matter, no matter what. At least that's my, what I got from calling the auditor's office. That's the only way it would go up.
Okay. I do not know about that one.
And on a particular house, my house, if I would put on a fifty thousand dollar addition, my property value would go up, my tax would go up as well, that's new construction. But that's minimal, I mean, we're only, you know, fifty bucks a, a year, you know, we're not talking big dollars, so.
Okay.
So that's the only way it can go up over the certified value. Okay, so this twelve oh one, which one is this, this is a continuing or?
Oh, one is the five-year, so I guess really for both of these, you're going to be stuck at the capped amount of whatever they certify at, unless there's significant new construction, either one of these, so really the difference is, do you want to put it on the ballot every five years? Or do you want a continuing, which you think is most likely to pass in the first place?
So one of these we need to pass, and the other one we can just, uh, let go to by the wayside.
You, you could pass them both and get them both certified, again, it's the, it's the next step after we get certified.
That we have to, yes.
That's when you're passing what you want on the actual ballot, this is just a certification, it's just, we'll get a number from the county, and it's on us to do the next step.
Okay.
So if you, again, if you still, if you do want to do them both, that's fine.
Going to have to decide sooner or later which one we want, so I think we might as well just do that. At my opinion. Your opinion is to certify them both? No, just to decide which one we're going to do and do it. How's everybody feel? Five-year or the continuing? So. Continue, yes, again, continuing gets you this a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from here to twenty years from now. Replace, if, if you'd go five years.
from here to twenty years from now. Replace, if, if you'd go five years, you can either refile for a renewal or for a replacement. Replacement will get you more money in five years. But you got to go to the voters.
My only, my only caveats, I, I would agree with you. I think continuing's safer, better, long-term, is that police levies usually pass. And we're changing this from a general levy to a police levy. Typically, passing a renewal for a police, not a renewal, replacement for a police levy is not hard. School levies are hard. General levies are hard. Police levies typically aren't. So that's the only caveat, but I, I lean your way as well. It's your decision. Just wanted to throw that in there.
I'm in favor of the continuing. And then, at some point, if we need more money, ten years, twelve years from now, then we put a new levy on, an additional one mil, additional whatever. And we would still get this plus that.
That's what I think.
Sounds good to me.
Go with the continuing, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, so the one, twenty, twelve oh one, then we're not going to pass, is my understanding?
Right.
Table it.
Table it.
So then we go to resolution number twenty-three dash one-two-zero-two, which is a continuing levy, a resolution of necessity for levying a tax exceeding the ten mil limitation for Questions, comments, counsel? We had the first reading on the seventh of this month. This would be the second and final reading. So I'd ask for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash one-two-zero-two.
Okay, Ms. Dosa's made a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Parsons is seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, resolution number twenty-three dash one-two-zero-two is approved. And there's a new levy that you just had on your desk tonight. It's resolution number twenty-three dash one-two-zero-three. And...
This is the first reading.
It's a mouthful, so I got to get started on that. An emergency resolution providing authority to the law director to execute the subdivision and special district settlement participations forms for the TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart settlement. Participation agreements pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and Placing Any Received Funds in the City's One Ohio Fund. Twenty-three dash one-two-zero-three.
So apologize for the short notice. Just got this yesterday from our law director. We've done this before. I forget what, who the settlement was with, but it's for the opioids. I believe it's about eleven hundred dollars a year that we were going to get for the next ten or so years. This is basically the exact, the exact same thing, other than the, the people who are settling, the companies that are settling are listed there. They're different. Don't have an amount that it will be. This is basically us just agreeing to the settlement and whatever those funds end up being. And they'll go in a separate fund that's to be used to combat opioid, opioid addiction. We already have a fund set up. So I mean, it's, you know, again, it's just approving that we will agree to the, to this settlement, and that we'll accept the funds and use them in a particular purpose.
Yes, we did pass one last year, didn't we? Questions or comments, counsel? Is there a requirement to use this money for a particular purpose?
Yeah, the One Ohio Fund, that's the same fund that we set up in the last one, and it has criteria. I don't have them in front of me, but in general, it's meant to combat opioids. So I think Narcan is one of the typical purchases.
Fire department can use it.
Yep, yep. We haven't spent any of the, we've received one payment so far. We haven't spent it yet, but that's the intention.
I guess police department carry Narcan as well.
I'm sure there's other uses as well. That was just the obvious one that was brought up when we first talked about it, but...
And you want this passed tonight? It's due by the end of the month?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Make the motion to waive the first reading.
Can I amend that?
Make a motion to waive the two-reading rule.
Sir, you said waive the first reading, so I just want to...
Sorry. Thank you for catching that.
Don't want to get too... Mr. George has made a motion to, to waive the two-reading rule. Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Young? Roll call when you're ready.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
I'm here, too.
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, the two-reading rule's been suspended. Any other questions before we move on, counsel?
Nope. I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash one-two-zero-three.
Okay, Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt.
A second.
Mr. George, seconded.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of six-zero, resolution number twenty-three dash one-two-zero-three is approved. That is all of our legislation for this evening. Hold business.
Actually, I have one piece. A gentleman that came up here, DeAndre, a while back with his son, said he was going to run for council. He actually pulled petitions to run for school board instead. Just wanted to let you know that. So he's not going to run for council, but he is going to run for school board.
Okay. He's involved somewhere. That's good.
Yep.
Any other old business, counsel? New business? We need, do we need to do the, the members of the CRA Commission or whatever it's called?
Yep. CRA Council, Housing Council?
Council. CRA Council.
Housing Council, yep.
Doing that under old business?
Yeah. We talked about that at the last meeting.
Still in, sir?
Yeah, I guess. I meant to call you and yell at you about it. That's if anybody wants me. Well, we just nominate or just make a motion to, make a motion for the certain people, I guess. I don't even know what this thing's called. CRA what council?
CRA Housing Council.
Housing, CRA Housing Council.
Okay. I will make a motion, the council appoint Mr. Redding and Mr. Bittner to the CRA Housing Council. Okay. Mr. Parsons has made a motion to appoint Mr. Redding and myself, Mr. Bittner, to the CRA Housing Council. Do I have a second?
I do.
Mr. Young, that's seconded. Just a voice vote?
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Darn you guys. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other old business? New business?
A vote for the play structure for, to take down the park. Do we, can we just do a voice, or does it have to be individual?
Well, before we do that, I think we can do a voice vote on that. Basically, any questions or conversation? This is about the playground equipment. What is the title of this gentleman that says our equipment's faulty?
Assessment risk.
Assessment risk?
Our insurance risk assessment.
Okay. And if we don't do something to protect ourselves, they won't cover us when somebody gets hurt, right?
Are there, are there any pieces of it that we could keep up? Like, I know...
The swings.
It's all kind of intertwined and support each other, so to speak.
All that big piece.
Just have the swings remaining, or?
Swings and the, what we call the top, the stuff that the regular kids...
Okay.
There'll be one slide for...
Yeah.
The side skills.
Is that the little blue one?
Yeah, the little blue floor is like...
Okay.
The mid structure in the middle is...
Okay. And we can leave the swings up?
Yes.
Okay. So the question before is, counsel, do we take it down? Remove the risk through the city?
Just liability until...
It's liability, yes it is.
Yes.
And we won't be covered by our insurance if we don't do something to protect ourselves.
Got to cover ourselves.
Well, he, it's from our insurance.
We need to make sure we get new equipment ASAP. Okay, any other conversation about that? Questions?
Can I just say that I hate the fact that we have to do that?
Absolutely.
But I think that it's the best thing to do. Summer's coming, and not having a structure or something for these kids, it breaks my heart, but...
Open up your wallet. Let's buy a new one.
I don't have a hundred thousand dollars.
Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Redding? Mayor, can you provide a, a more clarification on that? We could put it in, put a new one in. I, I don't know how long that would take, obviously, with a few months. But then we could go in and get a retroactive grant, basically. No, we can't spend any money until...
The grant works on a reimbursement basis, but you have to be approved for that grant first, and that won't be announced.
Okay.
Now, that's only one grant. There are many grants out there.
Right, we talked about...
So that's just one avenue.
Yes.
In fact, we find another avenue for this park. I think we do the Nature Works grant for Heritage Park.
Yes.
Or not Heritage Park, for Wetlands, and replace the one there. I think we'd look, need to look at all avenues, and try to get something in there by summer.
Because...
But I know this is out there. We'll have, we should have good luck with this one.
Yeah, for about two minutes, we talked about potential CDBG. And that's always something we could consider the path.
So, yes.
Was it when, and I had talked to Mimi about this. She said at one point that they were working on a grant from Duke, and that that didn't get finished before she left. So I don't know if they still do that.
From Duke?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We got a Duke grant for small business coaching.
She just said that they were work, she was working on it before she left, didn't, didn't get finished, or, but it was for, like, signage in the park and for stuff for the park.
I don't know about that. Justin was saying that a lot of these companies will actually show you a link straight towards funding opportunities.
Yeah, so many places and websites actually have information about brands right there, you know.
I kind of compared it to roofs. A lot of these roofing companies will come out and say, "Oh, yeah, you got damage." We'll file an insurance, right? Some of these companies are kind of that way, not as easy, but they point you in the direction to get the funding to buy their equipment. So I'm pretty con, I'm con, I shouldn't say con, I'm pretty confident we would get the Nature Works grant. That's longer term.
But we can also apply for other grants.
Yes.
We could do, put something in for the summer.
Yeah.
And if we get the grant, put an additional, an additional piece of equipment.
That's true. Even if we just get a slide or two.
Yeah.
That's true.
But I think, from my understanding, if we did that, don't they have to be anchored or something to that effect? From the report, they have to be anchored. So we'd have to have someone come out and actually...
Okay, let's get back to the original question. Are we going to have the maintenance department take this down to protect the city? Everybody in agreement to that? I don't think we need a voice vote on that. It's just everybody nod their heads and...
Need a motion.
Can we make a motion?
Make a motion. You can make a motion, yeah.
I make a motion that we take down the park play structure for safety and liability reasons.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Parsons is seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. They got some work for tomorrow.
Take a little longer tomorrow.
Take that backhoe down there and just...
Take it down and put it in the potholes.
Or melt it down and make speed bumps.
All right.
Just move the whole thing over to the UDF.
Okay, any other new business, counsel? Denise is not here. Anybody want to, Ms. Rissel?
Yeah, adjourn.
And what is that about now?
Adjourn the meeting.
You'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Ms. Rissel has made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dosa's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.